I want to thank you and to those folks who have joined. This is a work session for the board. Today is August the 4th. Just a couple of things I want to just as reminders and just to set for our, for our discussion today. Our work session is just that the board members will be having some discussions and maybe asking questions. We are focusing this session on the proposed our recovery plan, our opening, reopening of school plan. And really around the, if we can, because the staff who was with us is around the academic piece. And Chief Davis was joining us for this portion. And there is no public comment during the work session. So just, just those parameters. And this session will be ending at 5:30. So I'm going to try to, I was going to ask board members if you would just identify yourself as you begin. If you, you know, have a comment or a question so that we all know who is speaking. And just a reminder for folks, if you're not speaking, to please be muted.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Great, there were, yes, yes ma'am. There were a few, there were several questions that I sent and I'm assuming that I'll get some sort of response to them. So we don't take up too much time here in this work session. But specifically in regards to-
Commissioner McFadden, sorry, it's Allison. I have a quick question. Weren't we starting with the presentation? I thought we were doing the presentation from teaching-
I'm, I'm following Madam Chair. So she just opened up for questions.
Sorry, I just, yeah.
Yeah, yes, we are starting with the, we are starting with the deck. This is Christian.
Commissioner McFadden, I just wanted to clarify.
Commissioner Cheney, you're, you're muted.
Sorry about that. We'll start with that and then Commissioner McFadden, you'll be first up as soon as we complete that. Sorry about that.
John, we're going to use the teaching and learning presentation.
That's exactly right. I'll go ahead and start. I'll share my screen and get that up if people can give me just a second. All right, I want to take a second and just thank everyone for giving us this opportunity to kind of run through our school readiness around instruction, assessment and professional development. Of course, like Commissioner McFadden said, there were also a lot of questions that we received based on last Tuesday's board meeting. And so we're going to try really hard to weave in answers to those questions with this presentation. And then at the end, there'll definitely be time for additional questions. So we're trying to, trying to do a number of things here. And if we don't get to the questions that board members provided, then we still will have time at the end, but we should be able to hit most of them. Right, a couple of things that I want to first call out with respect to the reopening efforts, right? We've spent a ton of time hiring and making sure we've got the right people as we go into this new school year. Our Human Capital Office have been great partners in this. Professional development is absolutely going to be key. We are, we are appreciative of the board's approval when we change the calendar. So we've got eight professional development days at the beginning because we will absolutely need them. And we also are always going to work very hard to be flexible. So even though we have plans and we are going to begin to move forward, at the same time, we know that we've got to work with people based on their situations. And we've got to be very open to seeing how September goes. So that as we make, so as we get additional input during the year, we can make tweaks and changes along the way. Some of the things that we're going to go through today, you can see kind of on this agenda slide where we've got stuff around preparing leaders, preparing teachers, and then we'll get into our assessment strategy. There'll be different members of offices that, that speak to these. And I want to go ahead and begin with our leadership institutes, which frankly started today, right? We had a leadership institute on August 4th and 5th. And yeah, I should go back just a little bit. We actually started on June 30th and at that time we had not made decisions. And so we, we focused a lot around equity, around talent management, and really also making sure that leaders were, were kind of focused on the different aspects that we could go into. At around June 30th, we still didn't know if it was hybrid or if we were going to go in a virtual space to start. So we had a lot of conversations around that, just to make sure that leaders were in the right brain space to make pivots based on what the virus dictated and based on what we ended up deciding. Of course, we had a July 20th conversation with the CEO around recovery and reopening. And then we're, we're talking a lot today and tomorrow about the first 30 days, instructional models, student engagement, and also around goal setting. We'll have an additional operations institute on August 19th and 20th as well. I also want to point out that some of our, some of our grants will still be ongoing. They will look a little bit different. We're working with MSDE around what it looks like. But when you think about our CSI schools, when you think about our SIG4 schools and our TSI schools, right? We still will have plans around it. The plans will, will change to some degree and the professional development might change. But we still are focused on the schools as designated by the Maryland State Department of Education. And I want to make sure people still understand that. New principal training, I don't know if Human Capital is on here and I can't necessarily see it from the screen I'm at. So I'll wait just a second if Ashley or Roxanne are here.
I'm here. So this is Ashley Stewart, Executive Director, Talent Organization Development. This I talked about our new principal training where we have continued our onboarding work for principals. You can see the dates on the screen. We started in July and then in August, working around the Leadership Institute. We also had our staff attend that so that they could sort of pull the learning in thread for folk who are in the new onboarding work. And then we had a new assistant principal onboarding, which we talked about in the last meeting, where we're providing folks opportunities for self-reflection as they understand their leadership journey. And then that launched on July 28th.
Thanks, Ashley. And from the leadership work, we're going to push into our teachers and preparing them appropriately. And Janice Lane will start us off as the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning.
Good evening again, everyone. Just as Chief Davis framed, we have been doing quite a bit of work with our teams, not just in teaching and learning, but also engaging teachers and school leaders in that work as well as our partners that work with us. So we've been spending quite a bit of time in all content offices, all content teams, working on prioritized scope and sequences and curriculum resources. Also working very closely with Dr. Warren and her team to think about how social emotional learning fits into the curriculum work and into the daily routines. And teams are working on best practices for virtual learning. So really each office from, you know, social studies, science, ELA, math, down to the arts. And really thinking about what does that look like in a day-to-day virtual world, especially with content areas like the arts? We want to make sure that that remains as important as the focus has been throughout the time. So that as the scope and sequences are revised, there is still focus around the five creative processes within the disciplines. And then really the emphasis on inquiry and place-based learning. So as we're doing that, as Chief Davis indicated, we've been introducing those new resources and revised resources starting today. We'll continue to revise them and make them available, post them on our SharePoint where teachers and leaders can see that development as well as starting to plan around the professional learning with that opportunity. At the same time, partnering with our partners in HC around our new teacher institute. Again, being really thoughtful around what do teachers need to understand around instructional content? The pedagogy and practice that needs to happen as well as the assessment. Again, this is across all disciplines. So we're also working with resources that the teachers need and making sure that they have access to that. So again, I'll use the arts as an example, making sure teachers are aware of that. And also that teachers are getting resource kits to be able to help them with their instructional practices and routines during the school year. And then finally here in the professional development, there are current summer offerings that we've been working through to include continuation of our high-quality curriculum implementation that we started last year and continue to move forward with. So both around Eureka Math as well as the focus that we had and continue to focus on the work around early literacy and the phonics and phonemic awareness development of our teachers. So the letters cohorts, again, offering over 300 teachers training to the science of reading and understanding that. We continue to also partner with our online learning team to make sure that we have resources that support technology, distance learning and best practices there. And then finally, working with some of our teachers from summer school to actually elevate best practices in the virtual community that they've learned and bringing that together across offices, again, with my office in teaching and learning, Dr. Warren's office in the social and emotional context, and then 21st Century and instructional media and technology to ensure teachers have what they need to support learning. Here you'll just see, I'm not going to read all of these through to you. I've highlighted several, but you'll see that they're comprehensive across the different offices. Again, in support of curriculum or things in science like SABE's Jump Start. So how do we take that work and think about the virtual implications for that? In social studies, we were able to bring together both teachers and students around Be More Me in a design camp. That was quite impressive to get feedback and understand exactly what we need to be doing moving forward, including hearing students say what kinds of breaks they need and when, that you will see reflected in the scheduling models that we brought forward. As well as things like in math, you'll see here that the math office is hosting weekly math talks. Last week, they had 91 teachers present on their math talk to think about the new curriculum, those revised scope and sequences, and getting information around feedback with that. If you move to the next slide, you'll see again some other samplings, just to make it clear that we are not leaving anyone behind here. And really thinking about our gifted students as well as our ELs, thinking about how to support learning in a distance platform, computer science, as well as fine arts. Again, thinking about how do we continue that emphasis and ensure that the recommendations that we've made to principals around budgeting, concerns and things that they want to do, how do fine arts make that a reality in the revised scope and sequence as well as in their scheduling models? So providing information for teachers around things like in the elementary grades, what does that 45 minutes look like weekly for students? But then in high school, thinking about on those Wednesday small group days, how do they have one-on-ones or virtual band check-ins? Opportunities for ensembles to come together. So really providing specific guidance so that teachers and students and families ultimately will know what will be happening in each of those content areas across the year.
And now Dr. Brooks will speak a little bit about the special education preparation.
So good afternoon or good evening, everyone. Deborah Brooks, Executive Director of Special Education. And so as Ashley spoke, each year we partner with his office to provide training to our new principals. Really unpacking the role of a principal supporting students with disabilities to include both students with 504s as well as students with IEPs. And really talking about what their role is as a leader, both compliance as well as instructional, and walking them through the pre-referral process all the way until a student does actually receive the specially-designed instruction. Leadership Institute, providing that support to our principals, especially in this space, a virtual space. We provided guidance documents and supporting documents for our principals and walking them through those documents and talking about what a virtual IP meeting looks like, a virtual 504 meeting looks like. And then most importantly, the process for requesting crisis team, if there is a crisis and what that looks like and feels like for our school leaders and for our school community support. For our comprehensive coordinated early intervening services schools, those are our CCEIS schools that have been identified for disproportionality. We have multiple professional development opportunities throughout the summer that are provided, not just to the school leader, but to the school teams. So that we can disrupt the disproportionality of over-identifying black students to receive specially-designed instruction and being over-identified as having an emotional disability or other health impairment, as well as being suspended disproportionately. And then for new teacher institute, again, we partner with Ashley Stewart and his office in providing professional development to our new teachers, specifically around trauma-informed practices and specially-designed instruction. And we also partner with teaching and learning in the specially-designed instruction for our new teachers.
Thanks, Dr. Brooks. And Dr. Pfeifer will talk a little bit about college and career readiness and then scheduling.
Thanks so much. So as we have prepared for this transition, we have been working throughout the summer with our counselors and with a group of CTE teachers to help think through how we are going to support this transition to both virtual and we're prepared for hybrid as well. There have been great teams. I met with the school counselor team and they presented internally last week, all the ways that they have worked to strengthen their work over the summer to really ensure that they are ready to go in the virtual setting. In fact, just as a note, many of them are actually really excited about the opportunity to kind of block off purposeful time to meet with students because in this virtual setting, they won't have as many kind of urgent issues that come up that they have to deal with. And, and so they'll be able to be very planful in the way that they're approaching their work. Our CTE teachers as well spoke with them and they're really excited to be able to think through how we re-envision the scopes and sequences of our work in order to meet the needs of students in the virtual setting. There's been ongoing, or there will be a summer institute for new school counselors that's coming. And optional professional development on how counselors can use the Google platform. We also have been training schedulers and I'll speak more about that in a moment and that will continue through August. We have many opportunities for our CTE teachers to receive training, often through MSDE during the summer. As you are aware, we have 36 different CTE pathways that we cover. And so we're able to leverage this federal funding for these trainings that transition to virtual platforms this summer. And finally, our partners have been supporting us with trainingoncode.org to make sure that we're ready for the foundations of computer science course. In addition, I just want to give you an update on scheduling. So obviously we needed to provide schools with some additional guidance about what scheduling would look like. And so they're getting those training then prepared now. But just want to note that we actually changed the definition of what a complete schedule is. In previous years, we've used 80% as our threshold. We're using, we're using 95% now, 80% for elementary and 90% for secondary. We're now using 95% as our threshold for what is fully, you know, fully scheduled and ready to go, knowing that there are always some last changes that students enroll in their classes. We have started earlier. We've started training teachers in, or schedulers, excuse me, in April to ensure that they had the supports that they need. And we're supporting them even now in this pivot to make sure that they have everything they need to schedule students appropriately.
Thank you, Dr. Pfeifer. Sarah Warren, Dr. Warren will talk about student wholeness.
Great, thank you. Sorry for my technological slowness here. It's great to be with you. I wanted to first just note that caring for the leader circles, which we intend to continue at the end of the summer and then into the year. This was something that we started in the spring through our distance learning period. And we got a lot of very positive feedback on that. The, the way we approached it was to bring in our partners, primarily our partners at ACOBEN. And then eventually we did some with some of our other local partners as well to increase our capacity. Folks such as Positive School Center and Restorative Response. But the circles are really intended just to give our leaders a safe space with their peers and with a really well-trained and experienced restorative facilitator who can help them process what they're going through and then think about how they want to apply their own emotional intelligence and experience to leading the team around them and to supporting students and staff. So we will continue, continue on with that. We will hopefully expand it as well as we go to be able to reach more people, including teachers as we head into school. At the new teacher summer institute, we always partner with our friends and colleagues there in, in Human Capital as well as teaching and learning. So we will, as we usually do, provide a session on social and emotional learning and restorative practices, just the fundamentals of student wholeness. And we'll have a keynote session there to introduce our, our student wholeness work as well. And then the majority of the rest of our activities are really a combination of things geared towards both meeting adults where they're at right now. So as we think about coming into this new year, we know that people have gone through a huge amount already. And we know that it's going to be challenging at times for folks as we enter into this new school year with lots of things on our minds and our hearts. And so we want to be sure first that we are helping teachers, other staff, school leaders, prepare themselves, both mentally and sort of emotionally to enter into this new year. And that we're helping them build the strategies and the practices that will enable them to support students in their wellbeing and in their learning. We have a number of sessions planned. One of the things that we're working on right now is a series of wholeness activities that can be used by teachers with students. It includes a whole series of restorative prompts for restorative circles and social emotional learning activities. And they are built in an arc of learning throughout the year, which moves teachers and students through different social emotional learning competencies and skills. So we will have training around that to prepare people to use those types of activities and the foundational knowledge that they need to have around things like social emotional learning and restorative practices in order to be able to use those activities well. We will also provide resources so that folks can, can go looking at other potential activities that they might incorporate into their work. But in general, the expectation will be that students have a time each day at the beginning of the day when they can have a welcoming ritual that, that brings them into the day and allows them to process emotionally. And we will expect teachers to be embedding what we call the three signature practices into their sessions with students. So those are the welcoming ritual, engaging pedagogy, which is, Janice has talked about that as well in terms of brain breaks and those types of things that help give kids a bit of respite from the, the formal learning. And then an optimistic closure, which is a chance for, for people to close out their session. So we will, we'll train people in the use of those techniques. And then we will also be providing training and collaboration with colleagues from Office of Special Education and Related Services around identifying students who may need added mental health support and how to refer them off to the right place in the most appropriate way. The other thing I just wanted to flag, as we've had some questions about athletics. We have postponed our athletic season for now. And the state has just announced yesterday that athletics for the, the fall and winter seasons will be postponed. We don't have new dates yet. And so what that means is that we are still exploring how we could potentially allow for our students to have some conditioning practices. And if we, if and when we figure out how to do that in a safe way, then we will also be providing training to the relevant people on how to, to follow the right safety and health techniques in order to, to keep athletes safe during conditioning. So I will leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Warren. And I think Don Shirey is going to chime in with some of our 21st century work.
I actually think Don may have had to leave, Chief Davis, for another meeting.
Thanks, I'll go through some of this and then the 21st century work, right? Is usually a combination of schools that are going through transformation and then a whole lot of really the virtual space work that we're into right now. Don's work along with Stacy Davis has really been fundamental to what we've done since the spring. And you can see that, that there was an EdTech Institute and also a lot of AU course offerings as well. And you, you know, I'm not going to read those off to you, but this is a kind of every summer thing as we prepare for both teachers generally, but also for schools that are going through a 21st century change. And that instructional technology sessions for staff, those are again, right? I mean, we categorize this as 21st century, but the truth of the matter is, is that all of our teachers have benefited from the work that we did previously around 21st century. You can see the nine different types of sessions below, everything from Google Classrooms to creating instructional videos. Teachers will talk about GM Board, knowing how to do student assessment. So there's a lot of work that really combines 21st century with instructional technology. And I'll just say, Don's leadership around, along with Stacy Davis and that whole team has really been something behind the scenes that people don't always see, but we're lucky that we've had their expertise. And I think Human Capital is going to come back on and talk a little bit about new teacher summer institute.
Yep, this is Ashley Stewart again. So our new teacher virtual summer institute this year will be taking place next week, Monday, August 10th through Thursday, August 13th. You can see the purpose here and the intended results. The new teacher summer institute is just like any other year, so this year it's virtual. The multi-day orientation that's really designed to give teachers just the introduction to what it's going to take to start to teach in city schools. And so this is part of our comprehensive induction program. And it's designed to give people just a taste, a toe-in through the curriculum resources, et cetera. And here's some of the intended results on the right-hand side to expose them to the curricular supports, the things that you heard about that Dr. Brooks and Edie Lane and Edie, Dr. Warren talked about, and then to expose them to other district leaders around district office. The next slide really features the themes of the new teacher summer institute. They are, we are Baltimore, we are city schools, who cares? But if you think about going to either in-person or a virtual conference, their conference themes, these are the themes that we are going with this year. We wanted people to get some grounding in Baltimore, the history and the current day. That work has already started. We have about 450 teachers out of the almost 600 we're planning to onboard this year, start to engage in asynchronous content around the history of Baltimore. The culture piece is about humanizing the virtual experience. And that we are educators, again, is about ensuring that, that the teachers have an introduction to instructional framework, the curriculum resource by grade level and content, and the technological information and access they're going to need in order to start the school year in a virtual way.
Thanks, Ashley. And right, I alluded to this earlier around systemic professional development. The eight days of professional development will be great for a combination of school-based and district-wide professional development. And that'll get us ahead of the game so that we're ready on September 8th. And I'm trying to go quickly because I know there's going to be a lot of questions. And for the assessment strategy, I think is our very last section or section, and I think Heather Nolan is going to lead this.
Paula James is going to lead this, thank you. Thank you, everyone. No worries, thank you for having me. The assessment strategy information that we're going to review today is due to lots of hard work from the district staff and school leaders, teachers and parents. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fantastic job that everyone collaboratively worked to address as we think about the school readiness. And so amid the, amid COVID-19, the Assessment and Data Work Group felt the need to revisit the assessment philosophy in order to ensure that we're grounded in purposeful and impactful actions that will help people to understand why we assess. And so as you read our belief statement, precisely what's emboldened, you will better understand that assessments play an organic- you will better understand that assessments play an organic role in both the students' and teachers' learning experiences. Again, this belief statement serves as our foundation in solving the stated problem. We wanted to ensure that assessment data can be used in a timely fashion that it could inform standard-based instruction and it provides small group and individualized support to accelerate learning. You can go to the next slide. And as we worked to define what the carefully planned assessments would include in both a hybrid and a virtual environment, there were some key questions that we needed to address in order to diagnose and accelerate student understanding. The first is that we needed to ensure that we have three growth monitoring assessments, a math and ELA that measures the progress of students triangulally. And then we have another short cycle formative assessment that's naturally interwoven throughout the standards-aligned curriculum. These assessments allow teachers time to adjust day-to-day instruction based on student performance. And lastly, four summative assessments that gauge students' learning of the content as outlined in the respective scope and sequence. And so as you review this table, you'll notice the types of assessments. You'll see the diagnostic assessment provides data that will support student growth of foundational skills and provide student acceleration. The diagnostic assessment will be administered in late September or early October to support students' focus, I'm sorry, to support schools' focus on creating welcoming and supportive learning environments for students and the adults. The formative and short-cycle assessment frequency varies depending upon scope and sequence and grade level. However, the assessments provide robust and immediate information to inform instruction and highlight students' incremental growth. The end-of-unit or better stated, the quarterly assessments gauge students' mastery of content delivered based on the adaptive scope and sequence shared by my colleagues earlier. Want to go to the next one? The next slides provide an, an outlook on school year 2021's assessment by grade band. And so if you look at the first row, you'll notice that the state mandated assessments are listed per grade level. And it's important to note that the administration of the state mandated assessments is dependent upon the decisions made by MSDE. At this time, we know that the state testing will not be administered in a virtual setting. The following rows outline the district mandated assessment. Specifically, when we look at the second and the third, we clearly identify with the ELA and math assessments. And so something that you'll notice immediately is that the assessments for K through five, when it comes to ELA, includes our DIBELS assessment, amplify, I'm sorry, amplify and DIBELS assessment, as well as the wit and wisdom and affirm assessment. As well as when you look at the math component, you'll notice that the Eureka equip and affirm is offered for math. You will see that for the district mandated and all non-ELA assessments, those assessments bucket under, back again, our summative assessments, which are those quarterly assessments for other courses. You want to go to the next slide, please? The data-driven instruction and inquiry illustration here is a systematic approach to improving student learning throughout the year. The inquiry cycle of data-driven instruction includes assessment, analysis and action. The analyzed data point allows teachers and principals to dig much more in-depth to identify specific challenges and individual students or groups' needs. And it allows teachers to quickly pinpoint a student's misunderstanding readily and get to this deeper analysis of, of standards, grade level standards and individualized support. Collecting and analyzing student learning from assessments is obviously very essential. And it becomes meaningless if we don't combine practice and put things into action, which leads us to the third component, apply and communicate. And so taking action uses the information that was gained from the first two data cycles, data portions of the cycle, and it requires structured time for staff to unpack data assessment and understand what those data reports mean, communicate their findings to both the students and the families in order to ensure that there is a complete comprehensive network at home and at school when it comes to accelerating students' learning.
Sort of a quick time check. We would need to really wrap this up because
And we are wrapped up. So that is the last slide and we're happy to take the questions from now on.
Thank you. Commissioner McFadden, do you want to start? And then I know we have, I believe, Commissioner Robertson, Commissioner Brooks that question.
Thank you. I was hoping, thank you, Madam Chair. I was hoping that a lot of this presentation will focus on how we will be adjusting to COVID. And I missed a lot of that in this presentation. I know that it is kind of interjected, but I thought that that would be primarily a lot of the focus of this discussion. And I know that there's a Leadership Institute happening also, so I know that folks have to kind of move along. But I'm expecting or anticipating us staying a little longer to make sure that we can get, you know, some questions in. With that, I'm not going to take up a lot of time. I'll send the questions again for especially the ones that still weren't covered tonight. In the Leadership Institute, we talk about the fine arts being highlighted this time again. I appreciate that. There was nothing in the Leadership Institute schedules for any of the networks that I saw from, from yesterday that specifically focused on fine arts and prepping school leaders to manage fine arts programming, especially now more than ever. We, we certainly know that one of the ways that our young people remain engaged in schooling and in academic programming is through perhaps arts integration and, and fine arts instruction. I saw a lot that dealt with ELA, a lot with math, some of the other content areas. Fine arts I did not see. And I specifically know as a fine arts teacher that there has to be more access to robust resources in order for us to do fine arts instruction right, especially as we're talking about acceleration. That has to be the same case for our fine arts classes and our students that are engaged in fine arts programming. So I wanted to raise that in addition to CTE, programming and physical education. I would like to hear more about that. What is our strategy on making sure, there are technological resources that are specific. I'll be extra specific to vocal music, right? And general music classroom settings. How are we making sure that our schools have the resources to support those programmings, those programs? And do, do our teachers, are our teachers involved in helping school leaders plan scheduling? I saw Dr. Pfeiffer reference scheduling for, you know, individual schools. I mean, some sample schedules and things like that and saying that scheduling, you know, percentage is almost done. But how are our fine arts teachers supporting scheduling? Because they have to fit in thinking that especially the arts are not luxuries. They are necessities for all of our instructional programs. And we know that that is a, a way to keep our young people engaged. So what is our investment in fine arts education, those resources, the scheduling prioritization? Given COVID, not in person, because what I, what we just saw in this presentation dealt a lot about generally in-person or what would normally happen as we prep for school. I think the focus or a lot of what the commissioners want to hear is how we're adjusting to COVID and how are we adjusting what we normally do to meet the needs of where we currently are and how we're going to start the school year.
Thanks, Commissioner McFadden. Let me, let me talk about this in a couple of different ways. One is you talked about scheduling prioritization. In our scheduling models, you will see time for resource or related arts classes. So just like there's time for ELA and math and social studies and science, and just like students go through a normal sequence of related arts classes, you will see that as well. I think an additional thing that was left out of one of the earlier slides is in two weeks, there will be an additional Leadership Academy, or excuse me, a Leadership Institute. And we plan to come back with, with details beyond social studies, science, math and English. So we know we have to devote more time to that. We just could not get it in, in the first two days. I think your question about how we are prioritizing it is a very good one with respect to the resources. I think it is a little bit CTE-ish in the, in the sense that it is very difficult. And we've got more details to come with that. But I do want you to know that we prioritized it in our scheduling model the same way that we have it in the traditional one. But we are going to have to be innovative and I don't think we have all the answers just yet.
I appreciate that, but I also know that there are a lot of smart people that are in the fine arts area in our, in our district, in addition to a lot of our partners that we have within our school district. And I think at this point, we have to rely on them, especially given that our fine arts office is really down to one or two people. Right? We really have to use those partnerships in a community type way because we can't work in silos. That's my point. I know that other commissioners have comments, so I'm going to reserve the rest for email. Thanks.
Commissioner McFadden, if I, if I may, I can expound on a few of the points that you had questions about. Is that all right to do?
If I, if I could, because I have about four folks who have their hands up at this point. Could I ask that you send that back to him in writing? I just want to, I want to allow these other folks to, to get their questions in. And I, I hate to do that, but I, I do need to, I promised them some time for asking. Commissioner Roberts, do you have questions? I had yours. Okay. Commissioner Brooks?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. So I just want to take a moment to say, you know, thank you very much for the thoughtful presentation. And it was all really relevant and helpful to see where we're going. And I also want to acknowledge that this presentation answered none of my questions. I sent in about 20 questions at the, the previous hundred slide presentation and on the reopening, and none of them were addressed in this presentation. So I just kind of want to honor my time and the fact that the presentation that was just presented covered about 35 minutes, almost 40 minutes, when there's six commissioners on here. And we have plenty of questions. And so I just kind of want to put that out there. So I'm not sure how this part came to be. But I want to acknowledge that this is our time as well. And it will be really helpful when we sort of ask for something, that it would actually be sort of delivered in a way that addressed the, the very nature of our concerns.
Commissioner Brooks, let me, let me tell you that this was a regularly scheduled teaching and learning committee meeting, which was to have this presentation as, on its agenda. What I asked in, in an attempt to allow commissioners to have more time in terms of a, a meeting to ask questions was to pull out the, the, the report that was to come to teaching and learning around reopening and allow more commissioners to attend and make it a work session. So I do, I hear what you're saying, but that is, that is how this came to be. And I, I can hear that we still need time and the written questions will still be responded to. But I do want you to understand. So if you have anything you want to ask today, go ahead and then, and then after you will be Commissioner Frank and then Commissioner James.
So I just want to, I don't think I have anything to add besides that I'm just deeply frustrated about this process. So we can move on to the next commissioner.
Okay. So this is, this is Andy.
I had Sorry, quickly, Commissioner. So, and I will just add to what the board chair said is that that presentation was due to the, to the board the day after the last presentation. So there, it doesn't reflect the questions that we got after that board meeting because it was developed before that. So we will still continue to look at your questions, but I just want to flag that this was a presentation as the, as the board chair said, and it's been scheduled for a long time.
This is I wanted to ask two questions. You can take the second one for later if you'd like. The first is, I wanted to ask about how, whether and when the virtual academy will play into the education of our kids, whether there will be a standalone virtual academy as part of the portfolio of learning opportunities at some point. And the second question is potentially for later. Do we know, is it, is it possible for our school buildings charter or traditional or just charter to be used during the school year as sort of daycare centers? I hate to use that term, but places for our students to go during the day with adults supervision and they would, they would access their remote learning from a school building and give parents an opportunity to take our kids to a safe place they could attend work. And then of course, they could pick them up after the day. Those are two separate and unrelated questions, but if you could just address the first one about the virtual academy.
We still intend, if we have to go to a hybrid model, that we want a virtual option, right? Because we're starting all virtual, it's not something that will start right away. But if we do bring in students in small groups or bring them in in an A B day in a hybrid situation that we've discussed, then yes, we know that we still have to have a virtual option. And so that's still the direction that we're taking.
Do you want, I can answer the second question if that's helpful. So we are looking at the, we are working with partners at Wreckin Parks to try to set up some opportunities for places where students could access the wifi at schools and do, and use their devices to access their learning. And Wreckin Parks then would offer some programming. It's still very much a work in progress and we're trying to sort that out. But the idea is that we could offer some centers like, like you're referring to where students could do their kind of, their work and, and then have some after-school kind of programming through Wreckin Parks. It wouldn't be, you know, how many we can, we can support and, you know, that's still a work in progress. But that is what we're working on right now.
Thanks.
Commissioner James is on.
Good afternoon. Thank you, everyone. My first question, I have two, two questions. My first is a follow-up to Commissioner McFadden's questions specifically around assessment. So our wellness policy says that every student in Baltimore City Schools will be participating in a fitness gram, physical fitness assessment, third grade through sixth grade. I'm wondering how that is going to be taking place and happening as well as beyond fitness, what is going to be happening for physical education instruction? And then, and on beyond, as Commissioner McFadden pointed out, you know, we have, we have the vocal and instrumental music, but also what is happening with dance and theater and visual arts, specifically around materials distribution and the ability to do, to collect work that may not be easily scannable and uploadable. The second question, I'll throw it out there so that people can be pondering, is, is much more philosophical. And that is, how are we looking at this not just take what we've always done and move it to an online platform? But how are we looking at this as a platform opportunity to do things we've never explored before? Or possibly meet the needs of students that haven't been met in the past? So how are we using this to be innovative? And then specifically to that, have we considered using any of our school sites as innovative drop-in spaces to do science, to, to engage with the arts, to engage with physical education on sort of the same way that the city is doing pool use right now on a, on a scheduled, you know, you pick your drop-in for the week and that's when you are allowed to be there. So those are my two big buckets.
Do you have any thoughts around the physical education question? And then I'll try to hit the innovation question that was asked.
Absolutely. So the team has been working, as I've shared earlier, across all teams to work on revised scope and sequences and what are appropriate ways for students to engage both in new learning and around fitness and the different pieces. We are working with partners and vendors around recommendations for assessments, including Fitness Gram, as well as, you know, our typical assessments that happen and what does that look like in our virtual atmosphere? But things like dance and the other opportunities, how can we look at video submissions, live performances as students are working together? So the teams are working on those pieces. Some have been clearly identified, some are still works in progress that they are working on to bring in teachers and get feedback around that and also investigating other opportunities such as national groups that are providing some open resources currently around the shape, standards and what that looks like as well. And in doing that, really just trying to make sure that we are ensuring students get what they need, but also that teachers can monitor and support that as they go along would be the, would be the first piece. And then the second piece is really thinking about where is the opportunity for us to leverage different, you know, we're certainly not taking PE and putting it online and saying that's exactly what it looked like, but really But really looking at how do we prioritize and align the pieces? Around the work that is happening and how can we best leverage people? Time and their resources to do those things. So I know over the spring. Um, Jeff, our coordinator, he did a ton of virtual events and competitions for students. Um, so looking at ways that we can continue to explore that as options again across all content areas.
So Denise, if I could, John, really quickly, um. With that, are you thinking that this would be a standard? Like every third grader is going to get this lesson public pumped out? Are you thinking every physical educator, every art teacher at every school? Is going to be tasked with doing their own thing? And then if it's going to be system wide. How are we using those staff people? To do engagement and connection with students to help make sure that that socio emotional and engagement with school piece is still present?
That's absolutely right. So yes, we are providing guidance. Um, to to educators, you know, in all content areas again, to really think about what does that look like? And we've set out the criteria in those scheduling models Chief Davis spoke of earlier. But each school then will determine how that scheduling happens in their building. So whether that's. You know, once a week, whether it's across the week, how they do that and there will be guidance in the terms of PE would come from Jeff. Um, in alignment to what MSD is working on and then we will also leverage those individuals. To be able to help whether that's small groups that they're working on to, you know, have the communication with kids, make connections with families. Um, or whether they're actually co-teaching in a classroom so that there are smaller groups happening. A number of options are available to folks um within that criteria. And then just as an update, I just got a text from my team around MSD's current guidance is to wait for fitness gram until we're back in person. So, you know, we're working in partnership with the state as well around guidance, but that's just an update that I hadn't had as of yet.
So what about schools that don't have teachers then? So there's art, there's schools without arts, arts teachers, but we're still saying that we're going to meet COMAR requirements and have everyone have multiple arts experiences. How are we doing that if we're not doing it system wide?
Commissioner James Hassan, can I, can I, can I let that next question be done um in writing? Commissioner Reed.
I think it's a question, Madam Chair, that's important for the whole district. And then, and I'm happy to relinquish the last part of my question. And John can follow up with me in writing. But I think it's important for families to know if they don't have a science teacher in their school, who's covering science? If they don't have a biology teacher who's covering biology. It, how much is coming system wide and we're, this is a great conversation. I know there's a ton of work. But a whole lot of these answers are very vague, like, yes, we're doing that. We have multiple options. I think what the board needs is we have option A and this is exactly what it is. We have option B and this is what it is. Um, simply saying that we have it covered and we'll get to it. Um, I think we're at a point now where people want specifics. So the general question of how are we handling curriculum delivery at schools that do not have licensed teachers? At that school?
I mean, I would say this is no different than if, I mean, honestly, right? If we don't have a teacher, then we will have a substitute like we would normally. I mean, I don't know if there's something else you're trying to get at at this. I do think that one of the innovative spaces that we will get into is. Right? If you don't have a teacher or if um one of the teachers inside a school isn't available for whatever reason. Right? Can you put additional students in the virtual world? And have some type of paraprofessional or someone else be there in the class to help out with the chat, for instance. A lot of our innovative work, and I know that you said I can get back to you in writing, is really around how teachers have been working together in this space. Um, some of our better teachers, some of our better teams so that um, so that they're getting the best instruction possible. But if we don't have someone that is a biology teacher, it will be no different than if it would have been in brick and mortar. We will get a substitute, but we will also try to be innovative. Is there a way that a teacher from a neighboring school can also take on some of the students? I don't know, right? We, we're not, we haven't, we haven't crossed that bridge yet. But I do think in the virtual space, we will want to try to check some of those out. Um, but I don't know why that that question would be any different than before. Um, and I.
The question is there, um, because we weren't doing it. There are schools that do not have arts teachers. And we aren't meeting their needs. And so as we move forward and have this as an opportunity. How are we making sure that every student gets what COMAR requires them to have?
Okay, and Commissioner James, I would say that that, that as has been said, would be a continuing discussion um in a, in.
Right, but this is a, this is a work session. So this is the only time we have to ask these questions, Madam Chair.
Uh, we will, we will try to to give another opportunity, but I do want to let Commissioner Reed uh ask his question. He's been waiting. And I will get back if I can.
Hey, Madam Chair, should I just send my question to Allison and John? Or? Or I can pose it now.
You are, you have the floor if you'd like to go ahead and ask the question.
Okay, uh, someone mentioned earlier, meeting adults where they are. And my whole thesis is meeting the kids where they are or the families where they are. And we talk about needs assessment. I guess my primary concern going forward is. How can we ensure? And make sure that every family that needs. Technology gets it. They may not want to come to the schools. They may not want to come to twenty fifth, I mean, North Avenue. And I guess the other thing is food safety and physical, we talked about trauma. What do we do in terms of intervention and engagement? Away from district to the homes. Where that the, the, the kids have nutrition. Or resources and also trauma needs when they have trauma needs. I guess my whole thesis is us going to them versus them coming to us.
Yeah, um, let me hit the family piece first, Commissioner Reed. Um, so one of the things that uh, that we will do is we will, our schools are creating family orientations. And it's not meant to just be a checkbox where we say you've gone through orientation. We need to make sure that families have the right devices. They know how to log on. They know the websites they need to go to. And we'll go through orientations with them. Um, and that is something that personally I've been talking to principals about in kind of a general way. And now we're getting down to specifics as we work with them in our leadership institutes. And so that is where I think we're going to meet families. Some of them, right? Might know exactly what websites to go on, but we want to simulate a day with them. In these types of orientations so that they know how to help their child get through a normal virtual way. The, the second question around trauma, I think, is also an excellent one. Um, what I would say is just like our social workers and just like our psychologists would work with students. Um, in, in the regular space. We will make sure that they're doing that in the virtual space, but we have to do in a, we have to do, in my opinion, additional work at the beginning of the year. To make sure our general educator teachers can kind of spot trauma. And make sure that they can then loop in their social worker appropriately. Now, I'm not going to lie to you, right? When you've only got four district days to do professional development, trying to get all of that in is really hard. But I do know that our Office of Whole Child and also our Special Education Office that works with our related service providers. Have been trying to think through all of that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I know I, I want to thank everyone. I know that um, there are still lots of questions that we need to ask. Some of our questions, I, I think we would be uh, are, are showing the need uh for some of what the board has said about just. Opportunities to uh have more dialogue, period. Um, because some of them are not just related to uh, uh. Preparation for this year in the, in the, in the virtual realm, but maybe are just issues that are for the system. So we are, we will continue to work to see ways that we can um. Extend more opportunities for that to happen with the board. I want to thank the staff for uh this evening. I also want to thank the Teaching and Learning Committee Chair for allowing us. To uh use a portion of that uh committee time to uh, to have a board work session. I will encourage board members, um. If you still have questions that have not been answered, if they've already been sent in, that you will be receiving an answer. If there were additional ones, please continue to forward them. And uh, we will continue to to try to get those answers back out to you. Um, if there is no other uh item, I think um our time for the work session has ended. And so on this meeting, um, will be adjourned. And again, thank you, everyone, for participating with us.